Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We welcome each of you here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you will stand. We'll have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the day and especially thankful for the rain that you have sent. We ask the Lord that you would bless each person that is here tonight. We ask that you would bless the families that they represent. We pray, Lord, that tonight you will grant this council just a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues of our city. And we pray, Lord, that as we leave here tonight, that all the decisions that have been made will be in the best interest of those that we serve. We make our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is a series of presentations, and I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Randy Wheeler, if he would do that for us.
Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure. We have with us this evening a host of new employees, some of which have actually been with us since the beginning of the calendar year but haven't been able to make it yet. Some are very, very new, and at least one has just changed her status with us, and we're celebrating that as well. But from the library, I'd like to invite up Deborah Morrissey and Anne Catherine Smith. Just come up and introduce yourself and tell the city council exactly if you come up to the podium. And just tell the public and tell the council what it is that you do with the city.
I'm Deborah Morrissey. I'm the new cataloger for the library. I forget the official title, but cataloging librarian. I've just come down, come back from New York City. I was with the New York Public Library for nine years, but I grew up here in Newport News, and I'm happy to move back home.
Nice to meet you.
Good to have you, Deborah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Anne Smith. I'm the administrative secretary for the library, and I've lived in the area for about 15 years, returning to work after being a stay-at-home mom. And I had been in human resources for the city of Hampton and the Milwaukee Public Library.
Welcome.
I don't see Mr. Clark, but I don't want my glasses on. If I don't see him, raise your hand if you're here. All right, we'll move on. From our police department, Deborah Graves and James Wenzel. Her back there is Chief Bowen.
Hello.
Deb.
Hi. Officer Deborah Graves, I am the newest law enforcement officer for your city. I'm originally from Tennessee. I've been in this area for seven years now.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and council. Officer Jim Wenzel. I've been with the City of Pecosin Police Department now about six months. I bring key experience from working in the New York City Police Department as well as Ocean City, Maryland. I've been in Virginia probably about the last two to three years and look forward to continuing to serve your community the best I can.
Welcome.
Our services, she's here. Natalie Marshall. I don't see her. Moving on. You all, come on, Ellen. The city council is acquainted with Ellen Roberts and her good work, but we're celebrating her change in status from part-time to full-time permanent member of our staff.
I'm Ellen Roberts. I've been with the city nine and a half years as a part-time engineer, and now I'm your full-time engineer.
It would be glad.
Yes.
It would be glad.
And last, from Public Works, Key Tix. Mr. Tix, are you here? He's not here.
We can keep re-inviting people until they come.
Okay.
If they get to the end of their probation and they haven't made it...
Uh-oh.
Should have held a check back until they came.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes that portion of the agenda.
Okay. Do the other Tix.
All right. Next is a recognition of the participants in our youth summer employment program. Leslie Bowie is here to introduce the folks with her. Well...
All right. Thank you. Good evening, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, and residents of Pecosin. I am Leslie Bowie, the program coordinator for the York-Pecosin Summer Youth Employment Program. My purpose in being here tonight is to recognize our program participants and worksite supervisors. This program, which was sponsored by the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development, was funded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and it provided work readiness, skills, and work experience this past summer at approved work sites throughout York County and the city of Pecosin. I would like to thank the city, the public schools, and Mr. Frank Krieger for his support of this program. We had eight young adults in Pecosin working in the schools with the Public Works Department and in the public library. Six of them are with us this evening. They performed admirably and leave this program with new confidence, additional skills, and an understanding of workplace expectations. I would like now to recognize the individual participants who will receive a bonus incentive stipend for their performance, and I would also like to recognize their supervisors. Before doing so, I would also like to recognize Doris Feldman and Linda Rivia from the public schools for their support of the program. We worked hand in hand on this. So, our first participant this evening who could come forward, please, would be Matthew Brady Derousse and his supervisor, Mr. Bernard Wright. And thank you, Mr. Wright. We had two of our participants working with the public schools with the technology team. They were supervised by Joe Cosamiglio in the technology team. He is not with us tonight, and one of our participants is, that is Maurice Martinez. At the Pecosin Primary School, we had Cassandra Price. Her principal, Ms. Susan Butler, is not able to be here. It's back-to-school night, so we do understand. Cassie? At the Pecosin Public Library, Ryan Patton and his supervisor, Brenda Sinclair. At Public Works, we had Michael Richardson and his two supervisors, Mr. Jerry Cagle and Milton Wiggs. If they could come forward, please. And I do need to tell of Michael's good deed this summer. I think many of you have heard of it. Michael, while he was working with Public Works at Messick Point, found a wallet of a Pecosin resident, and he returned it to that owner. The owner wrote a letter, I believe, to the city manager and also to the Public Works Department thanking Michael for his gesture, and we think that this really represents doing the right thing. So, we're very, very proud of Michael for his good deed. Then last, but not least, Mr. Todd Perelli from the Pecosin Middle School. Unfortunately, neither of his workers are here this evening. Perhaps he worked them too long.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to work with the city.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor...
Yes, sir.
Just a word.
Sure.
My good... My name was mentioned, but real credit for Pecosin goes to Doris Feldman, and I'd like for her to stand up and be recognized. I mean, she ran the program. Last two years that we had the program here, it was cut back this year, I think, to New York County, Pecosin, Williamsburg, and Gloucester. They excluded Hampton and Newport News from the program. But Doris has done a fantastic job. I mean, and they're, you know, she's responsible for, you know, all the youth out there who had the jobs, you know, this past summer and last year also. I mean, she's, you know, fantastic. So, I appreciate her work. So, you know, and Leslie also was also great.
We appreciate all the hard work. This is a super program.
There's no pay raise, Doris, but...
One more, Randy?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present for you something that we're excited about. Council members are aware from our recent and ongoing discussions on economic development that if we're going to get our message out and we're going to compete in today's environment, we've got to have a web presence speak for us when other people are looking, searching, including or excluding us even before we know we're being considered. Mr. Callis, along with our intern over the summer who has a small continuing role with us throughout the year, and you'll see why in a moment, have been working with me to develop a website for us. It is a work in progress, but it is also very good work in progress. So, we'll take suggestions and comments now and forever on ways to continue to improve it, but I think it's a real nice first step forward and one of several strategies pushing economic development forward that I expect to bring to you in the next few months. And for those of you that may not want to stay for this, we're going to dim the lights in a minute, so if you want to get up, now's a good time to do it. Teresa, could you lower the lights a little bit? Wind tray's ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Trey.
Basically, just made a short presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, and basically the website has three main focuses. The first is to attract new business investments, and that can come both from outside of the city, such as a new company trying to come back in, or from current residents themselves opening up a new small business or investing more in their own business. And it also includes supporting current Pecosin businesses that already exist, providing them easy access to city resources that before were scattered around. Also gives them awareness of opportunities that are out there from like the Small Business Administration and other local firms, and also a chance to have their business listed on the website with our business directory when we put it online. And it's also there to showcase city information, and the city has a lot of property available for sale, and we need to get that out there so that people will know about it and they can buy it. And also, we can update people about our current city code and laws for business and also give them our contact information, so if they're interested, they can give us a The website resources include, but aren't limited to, updated city statistics and information, mostly for new businesses trying to come in. Of course, available city property, and we actually have an Excel database available from the website, and that includes city-owned property and also privately-held property. Current and future city events, such as the Pecosin Seafood Festival, a Christmas Parade, and other events we can hold. And also, as I mentioned earlier, links to city and local resources. And of course, this website is a work in process. Some of the future potential that we recognize is adding new sections to the website, having more detailed information on things currently listed on the website, and also more printable guides and additional pages that we can add at later dates. Now, we'll go to the website itself. We're actually, we're partnered with Virginia's For Lovers with an additional grant we have, so you'll see that at the top and the bottom of each page. As you can see, this is just the homepage. We recently won the Virginia's number-one best affordable suburbs, so that's listed on the front. Pecosin tour book's on the side, and we also have the Victory Boulevard commercial property listed.
Impressive.
And, well, we want people to know, why would they pick Pecosin? And we have key statistics available from the BTC, and also we have qualitative advantages such as the Pecosin Business Alliance, the museum, our quality of life. I have links from, I have links to MapQuest providing distances, so if you want, are curious how far away you are from someplace, you can, and I have major ones listed. And also a picture of our business corridor and just an overview of Pecosin, so you can see where it is relative on the overview. Our quality-of-life page talks about our small-town atmosphere, provides a gateway to the Chesapeake Bay and to other opportunities in Hampton Roads, the Pecosin Seafood Festival, also our schools and our library. And these are actually active links. I don't have an internet connection, or I could show you, but they're links to our school website, our library website, so we're also using, promoting those resources as well. This is our available property page. This is, basically, we'll show any, as much as possible, we're going to try to keep this up to date with the current properties that are, the current commercial properties that are for sale in the city. We also have an Excel spreadsheet that I was able to create, and it's not fully complete yet, but it has most of the information. And this is available from the website, and it just gives a basic overview of the map pen, so you can see it using our map pen city locator on the website. Gives you a general description, separates it from retail, office space, warehouse, et cetera, block property. It also tells you the owner and their contact information. Going back to the website. Also, for people that might want to be interested in starting their own new business, not everybody that starts a new business has a business degree, so I took the liberty just to list a few of the steps that you would take to start your own business and get it legally certified, and you can see the steps here on the screen. And this is how you register your business in Pecosin. The contact information for all the major departments involved are listed, as well as our office's contact information. So, this is our business resource page. This is for any citizen, most likely small businesses, that might need help with a certain aspect of their business plan or their business itself, and this provides, we use links from the Hampton Roads Business Center, the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development. We also list links to other places on this website. We talk about Pecosin home business permits, because we do have a lot of residents here and they can have their business at home. And we also list our tax information. And finally, the Contact Us page, we have a couple more useful links, such as the city website and pecosin.com, and there's a young picture of Dave. And that's pretty much what we got so far. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, Trey?
Yes, sir.
On the listing where people can list their businesses, is that free?
I was, I certainly, I think so. I was, what we were going to do, yes.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure of that.
It was, we're going to, we're going to link the business resource guide to the page, and that will list all, every business has an opportunity to list on the page.
Right, and I got to say, Trey has the real endorsement of the Pecosin Business Alliance. I've been to some meetings with him, and he's done a bang-up job, which is why he continued past the internship this summer and the businesses that, in the Pecosin Business Alliance, I believe, are going to be listed there. Is that not correct?
That is correct. They're actually already listed on the business resource page as well. They have a link right here.
Got anything else? Any other comments?
I have one question. Your spreadsheet, is it self-generating from the tax list or something, or do you have to actually have to input the data yourself?
We inputted the data ourselves.
Somebody will need to be responsible for keeping that up.
Yes, and that's part of my responsibilities as the part-time, ongoing job I have.
It's my hope that someday, that terrific presentation that you had on the featured property, if you could go back for that for a second, Trey?
Okay.
As we continue to make refinements, our longer-term goal is to have something like that for every single property that's on that Excel spreadsheet, but we have taken a giant leap forward.
It's just an outstanding drive. Trey, on your part, and Dave, I know you've had some input, and Randy as well, this is, that particular page is ideally what folks, like the base commander at Langley and Lisa Rowe at NISA, are looking for, exactly what they're looking for. And we need to be sure we take that with us and we meet with those folks.
And I think, like I said, it's a giant leap forward. Randy, appreciate your work on that, Dave as well, as well as Trey, because I know you did all the real work, and Dave just got the picture of you.
Young Dave.
But, young Dave. But the other thing that I was impressed, Randy called me the other day, and I guess we turned around a business site plan in 11 days. And that's fantastic news, because that's like, not only are we advertising well, but we're also putting businesses in a position to succeed in much less time than what we used to do, and I would tell you that we need to keep that push up. That's a great mark, especially in today's demand, which is low, but it sends the right message, and I'm sure that message will get out.
All right. Trey, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, bud.
Trey's staying on, you said, right, for one day a week?
Right. Trey's going to have a continuing position with us for the rest of the year, and part of his, part of his assignment, in addition to updating the website and doing the things he talked about, is to create the manual that he can hand off to somebody when he's ready to move on to a full-time venture with somebody else. I will say this to you, the quality of the work that's done and the time that it took to do it, which is relatively short time, it's about one-eighth of the cost to put up a comparable website in a place I used to work. That is no better, and in fact, may, this one, this one may be better than it. Nice job.
Thank you, Trey. All right, let's move on to our audience for visitors. Is anyone in the audience that, at this time, I'd like to address council on any issue? We'd be delighted to hear from you. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to the approval of our minutes. We have three sessions. If we could take those individuals, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes, the August 23 regular session.
Okay. Second. Motion made in second, we adopt our regular session minutes from August 23, 2010. Any concerns, comments regarding those minutes? If not, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. And the work session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 23 work session.
Okay. Second. Motion made in second, we adopt the work session minutes as well. Any concerns, comments regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. And the special session, September 13.
Mr. Mayor, I amend that. We adopt the minutes of the special session dated September 13.
Okay. Second. Motion made in second, we adopt the September 13 special session minutes. Any concerns, comments regarding those? None? Okay, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Stand.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one extension.
Right, Judy, thank you very much. Let's move on to item F. It's unfinished business, first and only item. There's an ordinance amending the noise ordinance, and it is our first reading. Randy, comments about that?
Mr. Mayor, following your last discussion, members of council at your last discussion, members of council provided suggestions for improvements to the draft to include reconciling areas of conflict like outdoor music as opposed to outdoor music coming from cars, pointing out several instances where there was not a quantifiable standard. So, what I've gone back to do is to add quantifiable standards to every aspect of enforcement so that there is no subjective judgment there. I've tried to reconcile them whenever possible with either the daytime or nighttime, DBA maximums in 34.7, so as to have a consistent, if it's daytime, it's this, and if it's nighttime, it's this, and so that we don't have lots of different sound levels for the enforcement. Also, one other change was to remove the sections dealing with animal noises in the back and simply continue to have it so that agricultural animal noise is exempt, but move the animal-related noise up to the listing of other noises, human, mechanical, and other, so that they are all treated the same and are, and can be found in the same place and have the same decimal standards assigned to each one. So, staff brings this to you in hopes that you will favorably consider it on first reading.
Okay. Got any comments?
I have a question. You said moving the animal one up to where? Where is it covered?
What I did, Mrs. Crawford, you're speaking specifically to 34-39H, which is removed, and what I did to do with that, one is adding in 34-37, number 10, an exemption under the noise ordinance for bona fide agricultural activity, and then go back to the numbered page three in the middle, sound generation, we added the word animals after human, mechanical, and electric in that, in that. So, attempted to move that forward so that we would have a consistent standard.
That's a good idea. Thanks.
I think I've got one comment before we make a motion, and I'll leave it up to the will of council and whoever makes the motion, but the one thing, sound levels on restaurants. They're already in a B2 district versus a residential district, and I would tell you, if we hope to not visit this again, if somebody decides that they're going to have a live band or something like that, 10 o'clock seems like an early time to cut them off as compared to a residential, in a residential neighborhood. So, I'd like to see us modify that to something, 11:30 or maybe midnight as far as a restaurant itself. Dan?
I agree. You know, that's awful early for, you know, if you're going to have a restaurant, you're going to try and bring in entertainment or anything. 10 is early. I'd go along with changing it to 12.
I don't disagree. I'm just wondering if there are any locations where restaurants would still be, even though there's owned restaurants, or be too, they, would they be close enough to residential?
Well, the one down on With Creek Road, I can't think of the name of the place now.
All I would say is you're always going to have border zones. But the question is, do we want to have restaurants that can do live entertainment? And to me, I think the answer is yes, and, you know, well, we may deal with a particular situation, but why don't we just go ahead? I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance. I'll make a motion that we adopted on the first reading, because I've seen this enough times to choke on it, and that we modify the section 34, Tac 40, on sound levels for restaurants to start at 12:00 PM, I mean, 12:00 AM to 7:30 AM.
I agree. I'll second that. And like, you know, if you have karaoke, for example, I mean, that can run, and that's live music, and I know like places have it now.
Does it need to be louder than 75 dB?
75 is not that high.
Not very high.
Normal conversation, 60. City traffic is 85.
If I'm singing karaoke, it's live.
I don't sing.
I don't disagree with what Gene is suggesting, but in just running through my mind, the locations of the restaurants we've got and the location of one to come, I think it's going to be back on our doorstep anyway, like Frankie. I, just, the restaurants that I'm thinking about are border right on, and you're right, Gene, we're always going to have those issues, but the ones that we have that would have any type of band or those kinds of things are right there in the neighborhoods that we've had complaints already without a noise ordinance. So, I'm a little bit, you know, I'm a little bit reluctant to vote for that, but on the other hand, I'm willing to...
First reading, maybe, it's...
Yeah, just something to think.
I made the motion to the first.
It's been seconded. It's been, the motion's seconded. It's going to be a discussion right now.
Yeah, I've made my comment.
And I agree that we want to allow the restaurants to do it. It's just, having driven back in town, you know, after 11 o'clock, it's pretty much a sidewalk sin role. a sidewalk's been rolled up most of the time. Um, but, you know, if we get a restaurant, that would be great for them. I was thinking maybe more around 11 o'clock, but.
Or maybe we could have two different times for during the week and weekend. That, that might help as well.
I think the marketplace will demand that, you know, the weekend is when it'll go later because most people, you know, especially in this town, don't stay up late during the week.
I think, I think what we're gonna get is, is no matter what we do.
I.
Just based on where they're located and the, and the, and the areas that are located near them, that you'll be able to hear these, these bands or whatever type of entertainment they have.
Well, I'm hoping that we'll be able to attract a new restaurant. In fact, I know we're, we're talking about one very seriously now, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's the very one I'm talking about, the neighborhood that's involved.
What I, what I don't want to do is discourage in any way by being so conservative that 10 o'clock is awfully early in the, for a restaurant.
I had one other unrelated question before we vote, and that is, Cliff, have you, I know that Randy has moved the definition of sound generation to include animals. Are you comfortable that if, when you get the call from my neighborhood about the dog barking, that you're gonna, this, this piece of paper here, you think will be fine for you to say you can't have your dog barking?
Yeah, I think it's a great place to start. I mean, it does give us an objective measure, and, uh, the only concern that he and I discussed would be the repetitive calls of the same, from the same place. You know, they let them out at 2 AM, they let them out at 3 AM, let them out again at 4 AM, and we get called three separate times, so. And each time we get there, it's no longer occurring. So that would be the only issue that could arise, and I'm not sure we addressed here. Um, you know, let's, I think we can take a look at it.
Okay.
And see how it does. Well, we're gonna buy the, as soon as, as soon as you vote to approve it, we'll, we'll go ahead and order the, the instruments, and, uh, and then we'll, we'll give it a test out. I, I think one thing I did wanna comment, if I could, be, we talked about, you talked about normal sounds and what those decibel levels are. Remember, we're not talking about the sounds that certain machines or people make. We're talking as we measure them after they've been filtered by walls, bricks, and distance. So you actually may have a much louder sound inside of a building, but by the time we measure it after it's been filtered through the walls.
It shouldn't be.
It's much lower. So don't think that the sound coming from a lawnmower is what we're measuring. We're measuring that sound from a distance, and we're measuring the music in your house after it's been filtered. So it actually can be a lot higher inside than what we may hear once we turn the machines on and we're standing where we're standing.
But at 75, I think, I think Tracy's right, that's about the sound of a person talking where you're measuring at.
Where we're measuring, exactly, exactly.
You're measuring.
That's correct.
So it would be a lot louder inside in the general vicinity.
Correct. Yes, and I wanna make sure you understood that. Yeah, I was concerned that you didn't understand that when you were talking last time.
No, I, that's why I asked about 75, a way, a long ways away.
Long ways away, it's no louder than somebody talking.
Right. So 75 would be okay with me after published.
Yeah, I, I think you've done a great job, because I had real concerns before when it was zero decibels in places, which is anything that's audible. Uh, and just, I know you know this, Cliff, but we aren't gonna be measuring lawnmower sounds because they're exempt, you can cut your grass, and so nobody get panicked that we're, we're putting lawnmowers into the noise ordinance.
Yeah, that was the example y'all used the other night. I'm sorry if I picked one that was not in the code section.
I'm glad that dogs were put back in this thing, but I do think we sort of hid it, and, uh, we need to point out or underline it or something.
Long as he knows it, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, because that's who we're gonna call.
Well, true, but the people that we're gonna call about.
Still 911, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Exactly, yes, sir. But I, I'm, I'm excited that we'll give it a try and see, and see where it goes, and I, and I don't think that we're not gonna, you know, have the opportunity to tweak it at some point, so I think that's the way to go about it.
Just tweak it next week.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Uh, are we voting on the amendment or on as written?
No, on the amendment and dispense him with the second reading.
Change from 10:00.
We're, we're.
So we're changing 10:00 PM to midnight.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
No.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. First item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter an accounts payable agreement with Commerce Bank.
Do you want to come forward and brief this one?
Commerce Bank approached me a few months ago and with a program that basically allows us to pay our bills with a credit card. As part of the program, the fees that are generated from the, from the cards, from paying the vendor, we will get a portion of that revenue from that. It's no cost to the city, it's no risk to the city, we can use it as much as we want, as little as we want. Um, it's cancelable at any time at no cost. Basically the program.
And how much are you gonna get back on paying the bills?
Um, a $2 million spend is about $20,000. So, and they're, they're, they told us, they saw us about a $2 million spend. It could be more, it probably will be less, somewhere around there.
The only risk is probably if you pay late, which won't happen, right?
No, 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 no. No, because that, they'll, they'll draw our cash from our bank.
Oh, okay, so it's on.
Right, Teresa, I understand this, this is like if, uh, someone were to come in, if we had a, a, a service that someone wanted to have us pay them, they would basically get the money and they would have to pay a couple percent to get the money early, and so we're kinda getting a sliver of the money back. So it's the, it's the person who wants to get their money early, the vendor who wants to get, our vendor who wants to get the money early, would get a sliver of the money, like they'd have to pay 3%, you know, the, the businesses have a 3% credit card charge usually to use a credit card? We're getting a sliver back, so that was my question earlier, was, you know, who's, who's paying money, because you don't get money for nothing.
You're, you're taking it out of the person you're paying. I mean, basically, just like using any credit card, if you own your own business and you sign up for.
Yes.
And get paid by Visa, they get their cut of it.
Right.
And so what I'm, I, I wanna make sure that as a staff, I don't have any issue with doing this for maybe something with Tom Sam, but if your, if your vendors start to say, well, then we're gonna have to charge 5% more, then we're on the losing side of it.
We, we have the option of using it or not. If the vendor says we're gonna charge you more for using it, then we won't use it.
One other important point is that we offer it on a vendor-by-vendor basis, and the vendor has to accept it. If they don't want to accept it, they don't have to, and they continue to do business with the city and get paid as part of the normal cycle.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
As long as you guys are controlling it, I certainly have no issue with it at all.
I just wanna make sure that we advertise out the right message, that we're not gonna pay all of our bills.
No, not at all.
Because it's just gonna come back and.
And there's only a few people will be authorized to use the credit card.
Um, yeah, yes, it's not, it's, it's an account, it's not, it's essentially a credit card, but it's not a credit card. Um, I did speak to a locality up in Pennsylvania that's about our size, and they only use it for about 15 vendors, and they get about a $20,000 return.
Okay. All right, any other questions, Teresa? Okay, thank you, dear.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve a resolution authorizing accounts payable agreement with Commerce Bank.
Okay. Second. Motion made in second, we adopt the resolution. Any other comments or concerns? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Item two in the new business, a resolution protesting the proposed closure of the United States Joint Forces Command. Better than those JIFCOM. Randy, comment?
Mr. Mayor, this comes to us in part from the Planning District Commission. Each of the localities in the commission were asked to, uh, consider this, put it on the agenda if they felt it was appropriate, and to the best of my knowledge, um, everyone has, um, so far, with the exception of us, and all have passed it in the affirmative.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution protesting the proposed closure of the United States Joint Forces Command, otherwise known as JIFCOM, and request the Virginia Congress to have the obligation of Governor McDonald to take whatever action is necessary.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. Okay. We have a motion made in second, we adopt that resolution. Other comments, questions? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item three, a resolution making appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we, uh, make the following appointments to the BZA with terms that expire on August 31st, 2015. Uh, Richard Bealan and Nancy M. Weisenger.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any comments? If not, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Item four is an ordinance appropriation museum. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, as members of this council will recall, prior to my arrival, the city council purchased a deed of trust to the property that the Coaston Museum is located on, and as part of that process of acquisition and discussions with support for the museum, it was the intent of this city to forgive a portion of that note over time, uh, based on continued satisfactory performance and operation of the museum. They have kept up their end of that informal bargain, and this action for you essentially catches us up for the, for last year and this year on, um, on, I think, it's a 10-year defusement of the principal, so this is, uh, represents years one and two.
All righty, any questions to the manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2010, 2011, and that we forgive, uh, the Coaston Museum for their chair of the interest payments.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion made in second, then we adopt the, the ordinance. Any concerns, comments, any questions? None, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Mr. Manager, any comments?
I just have a few reminders. I'll take advantage of the fact that we may still have some folks with us on television. Uh, I just wanted to remind folks that Seafood Festival is the 15th through the 17th, work boat races will continue, and they will be weekend prior on Sunday, the 10th. The Mackenzie's 5K run slash walk is the day before on the 9th, begins at Coaston High School. The fishing tournament that is, that is part of our festival is Saturday, October the 9th, and for those that have an interest and can lend a hand, the two workdays for the installation of the equipment that city council provided for at Kids Island is this Friday and this Saturday. The rain, the rain dates are the following weekend. We're very fortunate on Friday to have a number of persons from the United States Navy who will be assisting us. They're going to help us essentially construct the major of the two pieces, and then we will work, have a community day focus on Saturday to catch up anything remaining on the principal structure and to do the second structure.
All right. That it?
That's all I've got.
Okay, but Southall, any comment?
None, none.
Okay, Tracy?
I have a question. I don't know. Um, Randy, the dates that you just gave us, there were a lot of them, and a lot of good opportunities for people to get involved in different things. Are they on a master calendar somewhere on a website?
I will look at Viki.
You can get the link from the maiden homepage to the Coaston Museum. Okay, I was just thinking, you, you mentioned so many that people might have missed it, and it would be nice for them to, to get things. Um, I also wanted to, um, commend the city staff. We got a note this week in our packet that the fleet maintenance area had significantly reduced their budget without negatively impacting service levels, and it is our, our hard workers in the city that, um, that are keeping our, us on budget, and, and I just think that's great. Also, Graham Wilson sent a note about the DMV and, um, that, you know, we're doing, we're doing a really good job at the DMV, so I just wanted to commend them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right.
Uh, two things, Mr. Mayor. One is, uh, I mentioned earlier about Doris Feldman and her work with the summer youth program, but I also wanna thank all the city and school employees who took a chance and hired our youth to work the various programs in public works, uh, library and the school system. I mean, it was, you know, it's not always easy to hire, to bring in somebody untrained or whatever and keep them there for two, three months, you know, underhand, but, uh, they did a great job, and, uh, and the youth, I sure appreciate their, you know, the chance, the opportunity to have a job and learn something, so that's great. Second thing, all I've heard so far is, you know, great for public works, that they've been able to pick up the, they're gonna start a leaf, uh, bag program and also the debris been able to pick up the, they've got started a leaf, uh, bag program and also the debris program. Folks think it's great and, you know, they, you know, just hope that the people abide by the rules and, and put leaves in the, you know, the clear bags and not put, uh, you know, trash in there. I mean, and kill the program before it starts, that's all.
Absolutely right.
Yeah.
That's gonna make it or break it.
It's, it's, yeah, it's up to our, it's up to, you know, us the residents, you know, the, the city's doing their job and giving it to us and, um, we gotta do our job in keeping it the way it's supposed to be done.
Absolutely right. Okay, thank you. Carrie?[1541.62]